I was hired in June of 2011 by the Elizabeth Board of Education. The reason I was hired was that, beginning on May 22, 2011, two weeks before the Democratic primary election in that year, when there was a very competitive race for the legislature in Union County in which Senator Lesniak was being opposed, the Star Ledger began a series of articles in editorials. And those articles and editorials alleged that members of the Elizabeth Board of Education consistently pressured employees of the Board to contribute to Board election campaigns. Now, I’ve conducted a long, detailed, comprehensive review of those allegations. And I’ve concluded that the Star Ledger allegations about pressuring employees to donate to Board election campaigns are inaccurate, unfair, and unsubstantiated. And as I said before, knowingly or unknowingly, the Star Ledger article relied on seven identified sources. And I’m going to talk about each one of them to you. But every single one of them had documented adversarial relationships with the Board or the Superintendent. And the Star Ledger articles and its editorials never disclosed that they had biased sources. Also, the Star Ledger articles never explained that there’s been a decade of hostility between Senator Lesniak’s political organization, Mayor Bolwich, who’s an ally, and the Board. And that Senator Lesniak consistently, repeatedly, has been trying to undermine this Board by requesting the State Department of Investigation to conduct audits, investigations, monitorings. He and his allies have submitted Oprah requests. He’s done everything he could to drag down this school system. As to why he’s done it, you’d have to ask him. Also, the Star Ledger articles didn’t begin to describe the extraordinary results of this school system over the last six years. This school system, one of the poorest and largest urban school districts in the state, has had a spectacular success. And I’ll explain a little bit about that. But I think anybody could understand that this Board, which is responsible for educating over 23,000 students and spends over $400 million a year, was very concerned that the Star Ledger articles and editorials could undermine the confidence of the parents of the Elizabeth schoolchildren. And so, the Board thought it was very important that they conduct an investigation of these allegations and obtain a report that was objective and independent. And that’s what I’ve tried to do. So, let me just summarize very briefly the separate parts of the report. When I talk about the political history, I point out that back in 2006, Elizabeth High School was one of the biggest high schools in the country, suffering from overcrowding. They desperately needed a new high school. They asked the mayor and the city council to help them with the school. And they identified a nine-acre piece of property owned by New Jersey Transit. The mayor said, “No, that piece of property was going to be redeveloped.” And the city council, in December 2005, adopted an ordinance to sell that property to a political affiliate of the mayor for $500,000, even though the property was appraised for $5 million. The Elizabeth Board of Education went to court, hired McCarter &amp; English, New Jersey’s biggest law firm. And they stopped that sale, dead in its tracks. The city council rescinded the ordinance. But as the Star Ledger pointed out in an editorial that they published on April 1, 2006, there was payback by Senator Lesniak because, right after that lawsuit was filed, Senator Lesniak went to the Assembly, went to the Department of Education, and demanded investigations of the Elizabeth Board of Education’s finances. And the Star Ledger, in an editorial, said, “It may be that some of the issues raised by Lesniak have merit. What we fear is that this is not about dealing with mismanagement of funds, it’s about payback. Lesniak seems to be out to punish the school board and, by extension, the taxpayers of Elizabeth. That’s as indefensible as the original multimillion-dollar giveaway.” That wasn’t all. Not only did he demand investigations by the Department of Education, but he had an ally, a congressman named Robert Andrews from Camden County, whose office is 60 miles away from Elizabeth. Congressman Andrews, for some reason, demanded that the United States Department of Education investigate Elizabeth. And they conducted a two-year audit of Elizabeth’s Title I funds, in the middle of which Mayor Bolwich released a story in the Star Ledger predicting that Elizabeth would have to give $2 million back to the federal government. When all was said and done, it turned out that Elizabeth had to repay $12,000 because it bought some school supplies for some districts that were not within its Title I application. And that kind of harassment has gone on for the last five or six years. And the Star Ledger article, which focused on how the Elizabeth Board of Education conducted campaigns and how employees volunteered to help and took sick time to help, never said a word about this atmosphere of hostility between Senator Lesniak, Mayor Bolwich, and the Board. And so, they never even begun, began, to describe this adversarial atmosphere under which this Board and this Superintendent had to work. There were very hard-fought election campaigns in 2007, 2008, 2011, and in none of those campaigns were candidates supported by Senator Lesniak elected. As recently as this past December, at a meeting of education watchdogs, an anti-Board of Education organization, Senator Lesniak stood up, urged the crowd to help him defeat the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education, and then thanked city council member Frank Questa for introducing him, and said that Mr. Questa would be the next Superintendent of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We’ll talk a little bit more about Mr. Questa, who the Star Ledger editorial describes as an authoritative source and relies on Mr. Questa’s observations. You know, I might even just read a little bit from that editorial written on May 23rd. It starts like this: “The foul odor in Elizabeth these days cannot be blamed on oil refineries along the turnpike. It is from the ethical rot created by the city’s Board of Education.” And the editorial goes on and says, “Several authoritative sources, including a former Superintendent, Tom Dunn, whom the Board fired, and a former principal, Frank Questa,” say that is precisely what happens. You’re shut out of the system if you don’t donate money. An ugly, harsh, unfair, distorted editorial. Let me tell you what this school system has done during the past six years. Test scores for grades three through eight in grade 11, those are the grades tested on the state standard tests. Elizabeth Public Schools in every grade have improved every year in language arts and mathematics. In addition, the state group schools based on wealth, so Elizabeth is in the district factor Group A, along with 37 other low-income communities. In every year since 2005, Elizabeth’s ranking on the state tests compared to those other 37 communities have gone up. For example, in 2005, their grade-three ranking was 16th. In 2011, it was 8th. In 2000, that was in language arts. In 2005, their grade-three mathematics ranking was 15th. In 2011, it was 6th. In 2005, its grade-seven language arts ranking was 18. In 2011, it was 9th. In 2005, their grade-seven mathematics ranking was 23rd. In 2011, it was 5th. Elizabeth 8th graders have increased their proficiency in mathematics by 51% in the last three years. This Board of Education was one of a very small number of Boards throughout the country, selected by the Broad Foundation to participate in a training program. And the chairman of the Foundation that ran that training program sent me an email in which he described the Elizabeth Board as a star participant. In addition, school superintendent Munoz was one of a very small group of applicants. I think 7% were selected in 2006 to participate in the Broad Superintendent Academy. In fact, Commissioner Cerf, who got a briefing on this report yesterday, was a graduate of the Broad Superintendent Academy in 2005. And the Broad Foundation has been tracking Elizabeth’s progress. And the report quotes their executive director as praising the Board and the school system for its progress since the Board had its training. Elizabeth is collaborating, the only school district in the state, collaborating with the Panasonic Foundation to improve instruction in the public schools. Elizabeth is one of a few school systems selected by the Merck Institute for Science Education. And they’ve been collaborating with Merck for three years. Elizabeth’s school students in 4th grade have improved their proficiency in science by 38% since 2005, and for 8th graders by 57%. There’s a program that the federal government runs. It’s called the National Blue Ribbon Schools. And it’s an effort by the United States Department of Education to find the best public schools in the country. Most of the schools that have won this designation in New Jersey were in the richest districts, about 60% of them. There is only one school district in New Jersey that has had three public schools in the last five years awarded the blue ribbon. And that school district is Elizabeth. And there’s two ways to win this blue ribbon. If you read the federal regulations, one way is, if you come in and say, “We’re a poor district. We have kids who are economically deprived, and we’ve shown great improvement.” That’s not how Elizabeth won its blue ribbon. Instead, they won its blue ribbon the hard way, under the second category of exemplary public schools in which they compete head-to-head with the best public schools in New Jersey. And these three schools, the William Halloran School #22 in 2006, the Victor Maravleg Elementary School #21 in 2008, and the Terrence Riley School #7 in 2011, earned their designation because they were among the state’s highest-performing schools, not because of demographics. Elizabeth has a preschool program serving 3,500 students. They have bilingual classes. Their evaluations by recognized state evaluation groups have gone up significantly in the last five years. And as a result of this preschool program, proficiency schools and scores from grades kindergarten to second grade are 2000, in 2010, were 80% in reading, 87% in language arts, and 87% in mathematics. Extraordinary achievement for grades K to 2. The report explains that Elizabeth has gotten rid of all of the middle schools, which is a progressive change in education endorsed by some of the best school districts in the country. And these public schools are now K to 8. During the same period, Elizabeth has built seven new public schools. They have found that discipline incidents are reduced, less school violence, less substance abuse. I told you before that Elizabeth had the biggest public high school in the state, 5,200 students. If you read today’s New York Times editorial page, there’s an editorial endorsing the fact that New York City has made their high schools smaller and changed them into specialty high schools. That’s what Elizabeth did three years ago. They took Elizabeth High School with 5,200 students and broke it down into six separate high schools. Elizabeth High School, Alexander Hamilton, John Dwyer, Thomas Jefferson, William Halsey, Thomas Edison. The report shows how test scores have increased significantly and how advanced placement tests and college preparation efforts have increased substantially. Now, I can’t evaluate this ranking by The Washington Post, but The Washington Post, every year, publishes a challenge index. And we cite to the website in the report. It evaluates high schools throughout the country on the basis of how well they prepare students for college. 2011, they ranked the Elizabeth High Schools 2nd in New Jersey and 176th in the country. And you can look at their website to understand how they do their evaluation. Elizabeth has a wonderful ceremony every fall. It’s called the Perfect Score Award Ceremony. I was invited to it this year, but I couldn’t go. But in 2005, when Pablo Munoz became Superintendent, Elizabeth had 11 kids that made perfect scores on the state standardized test. In 2011, on November 22, 2011, they had the Perfect Score Awards Ceremony in Elizabeth, at which all the parents were invited to see 330 perfect score awards given to Elizabeth High School kids. That’s an increase of about 2,600%. And it’s an extraordinary ceremony, and it reflects this culture of educational excellence that this school system has advanced. The report then talks about the employee interviews, and it explains that we hired Professor Delatorre, an associate professor of educational statistics in the Department of Educational Psychology at Rutgers Graduate School of Education. And we gave him the entire list of Board of Education employees, all 3,800. And he selected at random, without any input from my firm or from the Elizabeth staff, the employees who would be interviewed. Professor Delatorre picked out the list and made sure we had teachers and administrators and custodians and security guards. Some were Spanish-speaking. We had a good cross-section. The union sent a letter to all the employees and said, “You don’t have to go. You don’t have to go to this interview.” We had 131 employees who attended. And of those 131 employees, 41% never made a donation to a Board election campaign. Of those employees who were interviewed and answered the questions, 63% never had participated in a campaign event, never had volunteers. And of 131 employees, only one, one employee said he once thought that maybe he felt pressure to make a donation. And of those employees, only one said he may have felt pressure to volunteer in a campaign. And it was the same employee, the same one who felt, who said he might have felt pressure. And he explained. He said his supervisor left tickets on his desk to an event and said, “You should go.” And he said, “I sort of felt a little pressure.” Everyone else denied that there was any pressure. And as our lawyers reported when they came back from these interviews, that the employees that they interviewed said often that the reason they went to these fundraising events was that they were fun. They were social events. There was no pressure. There was dinner. There was dancing. Often, there were no speeches. In a later section of the report, we list every single fundraising event since 2003 that we were able to find records of. And we explain that in almost all except two, the invitations were mailed. It’s hard to pressure people through the mail. The invitations were mailed, and the checks were returned through the mail. We described two events in which the fundraising was done differently. We talk also about nepotism. And the Star Ledger, in addition to the editorial I read to you before about the foul smell, the Star Ledger on June 9 wrote this in an editorial: “Nepotism is rampant. At least 20 district employees are relatives of past or present Board members. The U.S. or state Attorney General’s Office should be all over this Board.” And in my report, I described that editorial demand for investigation as uninformed and irresponsible. The Star Ledger never said in its articles or editorial that of the 15 employees who are related to current Board members, eight of them got their jobs before their relative ever joined the Board. You read the Star Ledger story in editorial, you’ll never see that. Nor did the Star Ledger explain that before 2008 in New Jersey, it was legal for Boards to employ relatives of Board members. And the fact that it was legal reflected in understanding in New Jersey that goes back to Mayor, hey, in big cities, the Board of Education historically has been a major source of employment. Not that that’s good, and the change in the law and the change in the policy in 2008 was salutary and in the public interest. But the Star Ledger never shined the spotlight on any other big city in the state to compare the number of relatives. In Elizabeth, the number of relatives who were hired after their relative got on the Board was 12, probably .3 hundreds of 1% of the total employees. So, we discuss in this report every single relative. We explain when the relative was appointed. We explain what their job is. We explain what their salary is, and point out that every one of their salaries is governed by collective bargaining agreements. And we explain that not one of those hirings violated Board policy. And this Board adopted a nepotism policy two years early. And in addition, I had one of our lawyers check the qualifications of every single relative to make sure that every relative had all of the credentials necessary for the job that they were hired for. So, I think you’ll find the section on nepotism to be interesting and to be completely responsive to what the Star Ledger said. The next section of the report deals with the Star Ledger sources. And we name the seven identified sources in the report. And I’ll tell you their names. Frank Questa, Louis Alp, Ronald Matlos, Thomas Dunn, Ronald Davidson, Patty Galanti, and Eddie Brancino. And these were the sources that said that people were pressured to make donations. Did the Star Ledger explain that Ronald Davidson, for example, had been brought up on tenure charges because he was accused of not allowing disabled students to ride an elevator? And because he was accused of sexual harassment? That was one of their sources. His bias against the Board was not disclosed. Did the Star Ledger explain that Frank Questa has been serving with Mayor Bolwich on the city council for almost a decade? That Frank Questa was a councilman who voted for that shady land deal that the city council had to revoke? Did the Star Ledger explain that in that same year, there was a testimonial dinner for Frank Questa, sponsored by Senator Lesniak and Mayor Bolwich? And where the dinner chairman was Louis Rodriguez, the guy who was supposed to buy the land? Star Ledger never told their readers that. And we have citations in the report to the most responsible journalistic ethic standards that guide newspapers all over the country and make it crystal clear that if you have a biased source, your obligation is to disclose the source’s bias. And that didn’t happen. And we outline the bias of every single one of those seven sources. And because that fundamental principle of journalism was violated, we conclude that the Ledger’s reliance on those sources was inconsistent with well-accepted journalistic principles, and that their allegations of political pressure simply are bogus. They’re unsubstantiated, and they’re not reliable. In the recommendation section of the report, as I said, we talk about the dinners and fundraising events since 2003. And we single out two events that I found to be troublesome. One was a dinner honoring Rafael Fajardo in 2010, and one was a dinner honoring Superintendent Munoz in 2011. And what I found troubling about both events was that both events had a host committee that consisted of a large number of administrators from the school system. And I said that even though public employees have a clear First Amendment right to participate in elections, that it didn’t look good and that appearances mattered. It looked as if this was a Board of Education event because there were so many administrators involved. And I recommended strongly to the Board that in the future, they adopt whatever steps they need to take to make sure that large numbers of administrators do not band together to form a host committee for political fundraisers, because the Board should not appear to be involved in fundraising events like that. I also recommend that key leaders of the school system, like the Superintendent, should not be honorees, and obviously, to comply with law, that none of the solicitation can take place during school hours or on school premises or with the use of school facilities. And then I have a little conclusion. And in the conclusion, I point out that in 1992, the court on which I served held for the first time, after 50 years of underfunding of urban school districts, that students in poor school districts had to be provided with funding that was at least equal to the funding of the students in the wealthiest school districts. And that in addition, they had to provide funding for supplemental programs like preschool and kindergarten. And in the report, I point out that when we made that decision, the Star Ledger supported the Supreme Court of New Jersey. And I quote from the Star Ledger editorial in 1992, supporting the notion that poor urban school districts should be given extra funding and extra programs to give their schoolchildren a fair chance to compete. And then I ask a question, that with over 500 school And then I ask a question, that with over 500 school districts in New Jersey, and here is Elizabeth, a paradigm of the kind of district that our court thought could benefit from adequate funding, a school district that has demonstrated that with enough funding and good leadership, it can provide its children with extraordinary chances for educational progress. Why would the Star Ledger single out this district for such a hostile, savage, adversary series of articles? I conclude with the observation that the parents of the Elizabeth schoolchildren ought to be proud of their school system and that they justifiably can take pride in the kind of school system that their children attend. Anyhow, I'm sorry for such a long summary. I'll deal with it. My son, Mike, who's the managing partner of Pashman Stein, reminds me that I ought to tell you what this report has cost so far, and I will so far. We've been paid $468,997. That covers our work through November. We have not billed for December or January. I haven't seen the January bill. The December bill looks like it's in the neighborhood of $85,000. But we will bill for December and January and February when our work is done. I ought to say in connection with the bills, if the Star Ledger had not written such a distorted series of articles, we would not have had to spend so much time trying to clear up the incorrect impression that those articles created. And from the Elizabeth Board's perspective, they were very concerned that after all of their work and all of their effort, they did not want the parents of their schoolchildren to lose confidence in the school system. And they felt that the effort that was to be made by our law firm and the expenditure of funds was justified. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So where do those funds come from? Is that the Elizabeth Board of Education?
Yes, it is.
About $700,000?
We don't know. So far, it's $468,000. We simply don't know.
Sir, the report of the investigations, yes, you were hired by the Board of Education, but it was meant to be an independent report, correct?
It was.
And yet, you say right now, and you went over a whole litany of evidence with the success, that the effort, that the primary purpose of the report was to clear up the allegations, not necessarily find the truth.
That was the, no, that was the board's objective. My objective was to find the truth. And I had no idea when I started what the truth was. They didn't believe that the Star Ledger had portrayed them fairly. And they told me that. And I said, "I'd be happy to do this investigation, but I need to do it entirely independently, my way, and whatever conclusions I reach, that's what's going to be in my report."
I just want to ask the context and the relevance of the successes of the board and the school district. Because history has shown that even public figures with the greatest of resumes and the greatest of intentions have had lapses and have had either been accused or even convicted of acts of corruption. So where's the relevance of the success? It doesn't necessarily address the allegations that are before.
Well, let me respond to it this way. The allegation is that the teachers and the administrators and the employees and the custodians and the security guards, that everybody is pressured, that there was a culture of pressure. You can't work in a culture of pressure and produce the kind of results that this school system is producing. It's simply, in my judgment, is incompatible with the kind of progress that they've made. And not only, not only that, you need to understand that this progress has taken place during a period when Senator Lesniak, Mayor Bolwich, but particularly Senator Lesniak, has been unrelenting in his pressure on the Department of Education, who gets emails from him even now, on a, I can't tell you how often, but at least they characterize it as very often, seeking to have the Department of Education investigate, audit, put pressure on this board and this superintendent. And candidly, I think that's outrageous for the state senator from Union County to be engaged in a campaign that undermines a school system that is producing such extraordinary results in a state that for 50 years turned its back on urban education. It is only since the 90s that our state has begun to adequately fund urban school districts. It wasn't until 1998 that the preschool mandate was issued by our court, and it wasn't until 2002, 2003 that the preschools began to kick in. So this is simply wrong, not to give this school district a chance to do what it's supposed to do for these kids. So that's my perspective.
Mr. Stein, you say that out of 131, only one of the people that you all talked with said that they may have felt pressure.
Correct.
But then you also said that people went to the fundraisers, many of them told you, because they were fun.
Yeah.
Is it conceivable that a lot of these people, being that they have a job, may not want to lose a job by telling you anything other than maybe what they feel that you want to hear? In other words?
They didn't talk to me. They talked to lawyers from our firm. Yeah, it's conceivable but unlikely. The statistics professor, in his report to me, said that he had 95% confidence that there was a margin of error of 1.5%, very little. But more to the point, the employees consistently told our lawyers that they weren't going to these fundraisers because they were pressured. Look, human motivation is very hard to discern. You know, if I worked for a school district, I might say it's probably a good thing to do to go to a fundraiser now and then. But there was no sense of that from the interviews. What the ledger said is that there was a systematic pervasive atmosphere of pressure with rewards and punishment. We didn't hear that. In fact, the one guy who said that he might have felt pressure once was asked how his career had gone in the school district. And he said, "I've been promoted several times, and as far as I'm concerned, my promotions had nothing to do with whether I donated or volunteered." That was the response we got. Did all 131 people exaggerate? Maybe, but not likely.
How trustworthy and no bias is your report, considering that it's been paid for the Elizabeth Board of Education, like half a million dollars almost?
Yes.
You are a lawyer, so you need to always put your client as the best perspective and profile. So you are defending your case. But how do Elizabeth citizens can trust this report?
Well, I hope they trust it. You know, I have a reputation in New Jersey. I was Governor Kane's policy advisor for three years. I served on the Supreme Court for 17 and 1/2 years. And to tell you the truth, my reputation is a lot more important than any money I get from this report. It does not make me feel good to take money from an urban school district. On the other hand, this is an urban school district that has a very important mission, and that's the future of 23,000 children. And that mission was damaged by the ledger articles. And so I was very comfortable undertaking this report. I've done investigations before, and I can assure you that there's not a word in here that was influenced by the fee that our law firm was going to get paid. That money does not go to May, it goes to a law firm, and it has to pay for the lawyers. And there were six or seven who worked on this job with us. And it has to pay for their salaries. But that was not in any way what influenced my conclusions, and it never would. Yes, sir.
Essentially, you're saying that after all the investigation, the only thing we found is a couple of cases where there might be an appearance issue?
In terms of the pressure to donate to political fundraisers, that's all. And in addition, I walk away with the conclusion that there was something very suspect about the Star Ledger allegations because they relied on seven sources known to be adversary to the board. I see no basis for this shrill and harsh and severe allegation of a systematic pattern of political pressure. I simply don't know where they got it from. Yeah.
Sir, does your report at all address, and you were very pointed in criticizing the calls by Senator Lesniak for investigations, since those reports came out back in May, at least three board members, including the president, because of these investigations that were launched, have been charged criminally in unrelated, yet still corruption-type cases. Does your report at all address that and look into that?
Let me make clear that the lunch, the school lunch issue arose about two and 1/2 months after I was hired. And the board's counsel made it clear that it was beyond the scope of my report to include that school lunch issue for a number of reasons. One, there's an ongoing investigation about the school lunches, and that issue is less of a board issue than it is an issue for the individuals who may have understated their income. In other words, under the law, as I understand it, the board has an obligation to review a sampling, like 3% of the school lunch applications, and they did it. But by no means are they obligated to check every one, and they didn't. And yes, the board president was indicted because her application was found not to be accurate, and I think two other school employees, and there may be more, I don't know. But that investigation is ongoing. It has nothing to do with the Star Ledger allegations, which focus on political pressure for fundraisers. And presumably, the Attorney General's office will make public the results of its investigation. But it's not something I want to add.
But you're purporting that because of the successes that the school district has had, that the board should sort of get a pass or at least be seen in that light, and yet three officials have been indicted?
Well, we're talking about apples and oranges.
But that's my, that's my point.
Well, let me make it clear. The pass, it's not a pass. What I've said in this report is that the allegations in the Star Ledger series, which focused on nepotism and pressure to make donations, were not accurate. I don't purport to judge the school lunch issue, but again, I want you to understand, that's more an individual matter. In other words, if you work for that, if you have students in that school system, you fill out an application for either free or reduced-priced school lunches, and you have to state your income accurately. The board's obligation by law is to make a random check, and they did that, their staff did that. And they didn't pick up the three false applications. But that has nothing to do with the thrust of these Star Ledger articles and allegations that came out in May 2011, two weeks before the primary election.
But human nature is that, you know, when there's smoke, there's fire. You have three alleged corrupt officials, including the board president, who are now facing criminal charges. And yet, there's this perception that in some way, those charges which came much later sort of validate the air of corruption that is part of this Elizabeth school system.
I think you have to be very careful when you do that.
I'm just asking.
There's nine, I don't think that's sustainable. There are nine members on the board. There's nothing about the other eight members concerning the school lunch application.
So is it unfair to jump to that conclusion?
I think it's totally unfair, totally unfair. This board's mission, under the law and under the Constitution, is to provide for a thorough and efficient education for these 23,000 students. And what this report says is that they're doing that. And my own perception, and I've spent a lot of time in my life looking at urban school districts, my own perception is that that couldn't happen if the atmosphere described by the Star Ledger articles existed. I think these school lunch applications are a much different issue. They're idiosyncratic, and they depend on each individual's conscience and moral grounding to file correct applications. I think it's a totally different issue.
Perhaps I missed this, just when you did, missed the beginning of this. How did you choose the employees who you interviewed?
I explained that we hired a statistics professor at the Rutgers Graduate School of Education. His name is Jimmy De La Torre, and his resume and his report are attached as an exhibit. And we provided him with the names of all 3,800 employees. And we charged him with the responsibility, with no input from my firm or from anybody at the Elizabeth Board of Education, to pick the employees to be interviewed and to select representative employees from each category of function in the school system. So it was Professor De La Torre that named the individuals to be interviewed, and it was Professor De La Torre that reviewed our results and told us what our confidence level was and our margin of error.
I understand you've argued that it's statistically unlikely that these people might be in any way misrepresenting their feelings. But were they aware that they were being interviewed by lawyers who were retained by the Board of Education?
I assume they, I assume they were.
Then how could you, can you say with any degree of confidence that they wouldn't tell you exactly what you want to hear?
You know, people, I think, tell the truth. I think people tell the truth. There was no suggestion on anybody's part that there was a desired answer to the contrary. Our lawyers were very rigorous when they did the interviews. And I think to get the responses that we got, the numbers that we got, suggest that the answers are representative and accurate. But look, can I guarantee that no one exaggerated or no one felt compelled to give an answer? No, I can't. When you have 131 people, and 130 say they were never pressured to donate, and 40% say, "Not only was I never pressured to donate, I never donated." And 60% say, "Not only was I never pressured to volunteer, I never volunteered." The characteristics of those answers suggested to us, and our statistics expert confirmed that they were reliable.
Mr. Stein, forgive me for pointing it out, but any Elizabeth resident, especially if you have kids in the school, if they hear that you were paid a half million dollars, or this firm was paid a half million dollars to do this report, and what you're saying is that of 131 of 3,800 people surveyed, and only one person says they may have been pressured, would you, forgive me for pointing out that people may think that's bull?
They may. I'm not, I'm not a commentator on people's reactions. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. I think this report provides a different context. I think what the Elizabeth residents are going to think is bull, is Senator Lesniak's allegations that this board is corrupt, that their finances are irregular, Senator Lesniak's repeated efforts to have them audited and investigated. I think that's what's going to be regarded as bull. I think there has been an embarrassingly unjustified campaign for the last almost 10 years to try to undermine a school board that was doing its job and that was fighting every year during the board elections to elect members that were supportive of the superintendent. But I don't believe that's going to be the reaction of the city of Elizabeth. We'll see.
You said that it's a political board in Elizabeth. That's what actually you're saying, between Senator Lesniak, Mayor Bolwich, and who in the Board of Education? Because you say Board of Education, but has to be someone.
I think there's an organization.
What is the name of the person? Do you think that?
No, there's an organization called Continue the Progress that has been supportive.
And who's the head of that organization?
I don't know. I don't know. But certainly, Mr. Fajardo has been active, and I don't But certainly, Mr. Fajardo has been active, and I know Mr. Montero has been active, and other people. But yes, there has been a political war, and I think that's an accurate description of what the atmosphere and culture has been for the last decade. And there was no mention of that in the Star Ledger articles or editorials. Nobody, nobody described the other side of this, this adversarial atmosphere. And frankly, I thought that was an unfair portrayal of what was going on.
About the fundraising letter, the apparent, or the apparent membership drive letter that we received in East Wall, New Jersey, that the Board insisted was a forgery? Are you convinced that that was in fact a forgery? That was not from Fajardo in his own intention?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
You guys requested a copy of it specifically from us. We forwarded it to you to look at as part of the investigation.
I don't know that.
This was the letter signed by Fajardo addressed to layoff employees, saying if they donated money, they might be able to get their jobs back?
I've never seen all that or anything. If you sent it to me, I've never.
Or request, you asked us to send it to you.
I've never seen.
No, that's not, that's not correct. Passmann Stein nor Justice Stein asked for that letter. That letter is, I think you're confusing that with a request that might have come from someone at the Board, but not from this office.
Okay.
Not from this office.
Never seen.
Justice Stein, can you just go over the math a little bit? When you talked about the nepotism, you said there were 15 employees, district-wide, you know, had some relation to?
Current Board members.
To current Board members.
Current Board members.
Eight got their jobs beforehand. That's still seven. It's close to 50% afterwards. And then you made another comment that 12 relatives were then hired after. So I'm just.
Let me, let me give you the math, as I understand it.
Yeah.
If you look at the list today, there are 20 employees related either to current or prior Board members.
20, okay.
Yep. 15 are related to current Board members. Of those 15, and you wouldn't have known this if you read the Ledger editorial that said you should have an investigation, eight got their jobs before their relative went on the Board.
But how do you explain the other seven?
Well, I explained it because it wasn't illegal. There was, in other words, all of those seven employees got their job, let me explain.
You also acknowledge the law changed in 2000.
I'm going to explain it. They all got their jobs before the law changed. The law, in 2008, the Department of Education adopted a regulation that said that a school district can't get state funding unless they have a nepotism policy that meets certain regulatory standards. Elizabeth adopted a policy in '06, they amended it in '07, they amended it several times to comply with state law. But nobody was hired after that regulation took effect. Nobody. I mean, some of these employees go back to '97, '98, '99, and they were related to members of the Board then. But the Ledger, in calling for a criminal investigation, never explained that it wasn't illegal. Look, I mean, if you read about Jersey City politics, or if you know about the history of politics in Newark and Trenton and Camden, that's where the jobs were. And that the legislature and the Department never adopted that new law until 2008 is a reflection of a culture. I'm not saying I agree with the culture. But you know, if you're poor and recently immigrated and you're looking for a job, many times, people wind up on the payroll of the city government or of the school system. If the Ledger wanted to be fair about it, they would have said, yes, Elizabeth has 20 employees that are related, and Newark has this many, and Camden has this many, nothing like that. So my reaction, as the report reflects, was to go through every single file and explain that nobody was hired after the law changed, and that eight of the 20 were hired before their relatives joined the Board.
But just because it's legal doesn't necessarily make it right.
I agree with you.
Do you agree?
Of course, of course. But, but, you know, did you ever play baseball?
Yes.
When I played baseball, they used to have a rule, I think they still have. And the rule is that if the catcher drops the third strike, you can run to first base. And if you get there before they throw to first, you're safe. I always thought that was a dumb rule. But whenever the catcher dropped the third strike on me, which was occasional, I would run to first base. And I think that you can't be unfair and fault the Elizabeth Board if they had qualified relatives, I guess we're talking about 12, out of 3,800 employees who were hired before the law changed. I agree with you. The new law's better. But I think the Ledger's castigation of this Board and their employees was unfair.
The other math I wanted to find out, 131 employees that were questioned out of 3,800. Is that a fair statistical sampling, number one?
Yeah.
It's a very small number.
Yeah.
And even if you juxtapose that number, you found one out of 131, you do the math, that's 30. Now you're talking about dozens of employees, nearly three dozen employees, who, if you do the math, have, could legitimately allege that they felt pressure. That sounds like a significant number if you.
Not as, not as many as the Ledger article would make you think. Yes, if you did the math, eight tenths of 1%, I think is about 27 employees. And you read the Ledger articles, that's not the picture they portrayed. What they portrayed was pervasive, consistent, pressure, rewards, punishment, a terrible culture. It doesn't exist.
But then it's fair to say that, yes, the pressure exists, but it's not as widespread as portrayed?
I don't believe that it exists. And, you know, people perceive things differently. I told you what this employee said. He said his supervisor left the ticket on his desk and said to him, it would be good if you went to the dinner. Now, look, that doesn't sound to me like something a supervisor should say to an employee. Does it sound like pressure? Some people might say yes, some people might not. But that's not the pervasive pressure that was described by the Star Ledger. It's an entirely different feeling to me.
So are the allegations, are they completely untrue, or are they just isolated and not as widespread?
I think the allegation is untrue. That's my conclusion.